The Pipestone City Council meeting for September fifteenth to order, please. Could I have a roll call?
Mayor Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, here. Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Councilmember Polback.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise if you're able to for our pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda, is there any additions, changes, or deletions to the agenda? And I have a addition to the agenda. Under new business item I, I'd like to discuss a four-way stop sign request at Third Avenue Northwest and Second Street Northwest. And then as a deletion from the agenda, I'd like to delete the evaluation performance of Deb Nelson, the executive closed session. So I'd entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with those changes. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and is there any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed say no, and motion carries. The consent agenda. The consent agenda contains the following items for approval. The September second twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes. The September second twenty twenty-five special work session meeting minutes. The September second twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. The payment of claims and listing of bills. And the August twenty twenty-five financial report. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed say no, and motion is approved. Community concerns, do we have anyone signed in for community concerns, Deb?
We do not.
Okay. So we'll move on to our presentation. And we have a presentation from the Braveheart Society to counsel on the Magellan and One OK Pipeline proposal. And guests from the Braveheart Society are present and would like to speak on that proposal. So I would, whoever wants to speak, come up to the microphone here. Introduce yourself, where you're from, and go ahead from there.
Thank you.
And sometimes you gotta pull it down so that we can hear you. Or just get it there at mouth level.
Can you hear?
Perfect, okay.
I mean, yes. Um, okay, thank you. Uh, I'm based in English from the Yankton Land of the Dakota, and I pass this out through Deb. I think they've only sent you copies and you have all of this. So real briefly, I'm here representing Braveheart. My cousin Anita will introduce herself. She is with me on the treaty committee. So two entities are here tonight, Braveheart and the treaty committee, which work very, very closely for EAB. And so we work closely together. And I, my daughter, who has a doctorate in anthropology, put this paper together on reports of cultural resources. And we don't have time to go through it, but at some time point, if we have an education session, I would love to go through this. But I want to afford time for this brilliant team that we have here tonight, but please read it out. And it's called the Spirit Road to Pipestone. And so remember what the thirty-five thousand comments? They are all on the spirit road that come here and have been coming here for thousands of years. And so it's a major sacred site. So that's the point we're making tonight, and we have different dynamics. So, um, this is a picture of our Braveheart Lodge. This is the Buffalo, you see our spirit grounds up there. But we have been researched, we came back alive thirty years ago, nineteen ninety-four, we brought back a whole society. Our oldest member is ninety-five, we're having a big birthday party soon, but we preserve the culture for the generations to come next month. Goodness gracious. And this is because it's so important to us and part of the treaty committee, the eighteen fifty-eight treaty. Our grandfather, Stuart, he said he would not sign the eighteen fifty-eight treaty to create the reservation unless Pipestone was involved in. Even though it's hundreds of miles away, this was our responsibility by all the other tribes since about the seventeen hundreds. And so the government agreed, and this is treaty air right. They took us to the Supreme Court, we fought hard, there's some pictures of our grandparents and parents. But we have since eighteen fifty-eight and just recently the solicitor rule that indeed Yankton has direct rights to query at the Pipestone. We don't have to get a permit anymore. So that's the US solicitor that had and will send that letter to, I forgot to post it. But because of that, we entered in as interpersists. And we cooperate with the tribe and the commission listened to us in light of the many tribal governments that were involved and thirty-five thousand people that responded. They did rescind the permit. We were totally amazed, floor to me. And then they said more work to be done. My act, you have a representative here, they, um, the Minnesota Advisory Council, Indian Advisory Council, too, select a contractor for the survey. Because we have the traditional knowledge that you'll be hearing about. And a lot of white companies that are surveying have no idea what that consists of, so that's why it's so important for us. This is, uh, you have a copy of this, so you can read it yourself on the order. And Isaac, I'm sure we'll talk to that at the next one. These are the tribes that are affiliated, the US government, through our input and theirs, have determined that there are twenty-three, twenty-three tribes that are part of Pipestone. These are the ones that entered into the action of the PUC. And so we have told them that we want all twenty-three involved. They are, everyone else is just as important. But we will coordinate as the PUC order says to work with MYAC, and we are ready and willing to launch our survey. The pipeline company jumped the gun, they did their survey because they thought we didn't have to ask you to do it. But you'll listen to some of the team, and we certainly have capacity to stop there and turn it over to the next, can you go to the next one? Okay.
So there's eight more tribes?
Yeah.
That will be in that later.
All of them. There are tribes beyond that, but we have held back because we feel like we know our methodology, our own methodology. Because a lot of the art companies, they are not people who didn't learn any of the archeological training. And I think we've had history over the past years, it's called a traditional culture survey, meaning that is a survey that is done by native people. And was through the National Park Six, so it's well established. Good question.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, this is Delaney. Here's.
Greetings, everyone. My name's Elijah Small, I am a wildlife biologist by training. And so the last ten years working on frontline wildlife issues. So, uh, what we like, I spend my time as a young person, I'm up there originally from Marshall, so I just got the road. Um, so my training in wildlife biology, you know, took me all over the room, but I never really thought about the place I grew up in, which is, you know, these two counties. Uh, then, you know, I grew up in Lain County, and I started looking at what happened to our bird. So when we think about the Kalamata in the Pipestone itself, we're not just thinking of the actual stone itself. When we look at this landscape as indigenous people, we see a sacred bundle, we see the entire Pipestone County as being part of that Pipestone monument. And so when we're looking at the Kalamata, really what we're dealing with is this issue of scarcity. Kalamata, and this will come up in other slides, it only exists one place out here, just up the road. And if we think about all of those constituent relationships, along with the Kalamata, the water, the animals, most of that stuff has disappeared. In the last hundred and fifty years, we've seen Pipestone County go from having about six thousand species to about six hundred. So we've experienced a ninety percent loss in species diversity in Pipestone County. And most of that remaining species are going to be found in near-digious semitaries and parks. So if you look at the map up here on the left, you see what Pipestone County would have looked like prior to roads, railroads, towns becoming. And if you look on the right, what we see is what's left of the natural environment of Pipestone, the relationships that work. So on the right, you can see wherever there is green, that is actual habitat, that is a habitat. A forty-six rare, threatened or endangered species that live here at Pipestone. They're all on those little tiny islands. So when we're thinking about this pipeline, we're like, no, we don't want our pipeline, what we want is we want to connect those green spaces on the map. We want to bring the deer back. We, microphone. So we want to bring the deer back, we want to bring peasants back. Um, and one of the ways that we do that is by reconnecting those green spots. So if we're thinking about Pipestone in scarcity in particular, we've gone from in an environment with six thousand species of wolves, grizzly bear, pramahorn, et cetera, to things with far, far less. And a lot of, a lot of these modifications, they will sample and they will put for her around creeks. Dramatically increases the water quality. So if we're looking at this, the green spots are where all of our endangered and threatened species are living. And by connecting them, we could dramatically increase the number of those species that are present here. And that saves you the way as a city from having to deal with endangered species legislation. Um, but really what's happening is these roads and these little green spots are where most of the, most of your creatures are living. And as an interconnected landscape, if we're, if we're instead of focusing, instead of focusing on putting a pipeline, focused instead on doing some small restoration of the green jobs, we could increase the water quality that you have here in Pipestone. I know that you have a lot of water down below, so everything flowing through those streams is making it down low. Um, and Alexis, who has, you'll see how interconnected these waterways are. So and everybody thinking about it is, we have a leak here, people are down here are gonna feel it, because this is all one interconnected watershed. So when we're looking at Pipestone, what we're really looking at is there's hardly any of that landscape left, and there's very little of that Kalamata left. You know, it's in a few little spots. So we're dealing with massive amounts of scarcity, and from there, I'm gonna hand it over to Alexis.
Next slide. Oh, next slide, we're right there, appreciate it.
Good evening, hello, everybody, I'm Alexis Arshabel, and I'm up at the Gota for the Sangrahtsu Tribe, and I work with the society as an archaeologist. Um, I also hold a PhD in geological engineering, University of North Dakota. Um, in this image here, what the legend says is that everything is independent by water at the surface and below the surface. And if you can see that little yellow dog on the left side of this map, the larger, shows that Pipestone National Monument is located with the, is Pipestone National, or the Pipestone Creek Watershed. It's a part of the Lower Sioux Watershed, which ultimately drains to the Missouri River. Um, can you just push next a couple times, and one more, one more, one more. Just one more. Okay, sorry again. Okay, so, um, this image here, um, so we can see the Pipestone National Monument here, and this white mud areas are in the light blue. And the bay over the drainage areas around the Pipestone Creek. Pipestone Creek trails for about fifty-three miles, as you can see, and then it connects to Slidewalk Creek. And then to the Big Sioux River, and these are our tributaries that are major tributaries to the Missouri River Basin. So essentially what we're trying to show you here is this small headwater sub-basin holds significant to an entire large watershed network. Next. Again, going back there. Um, so we can see that Pipestone National Monument is a part of the Lower Sioux Watershed, which contributes significantly because this is the Big Sioux River that drains a large area and contributes to the Missouri River. And so what's felt in the headwaters, whether it be as a result of climate change or after the changes, oil spills, it will be felt the largest and the biggest in the smaller watersheds, which is the Pipestone Creek Watershed, and will have impacts to the city of Pipestone. Because you quite literally rely on your drinking water from the aquifers. And there are shallow zones around, surrounding this area, which all have not been identified. Um, and these are glacial till aquifers, so they're extremely vulnerable to contamination. Um, so we can see that the Lower Sioux Watershed is a part of the entire Missouri River Basin, so it holds a quite a significant area, this impact. Next one. Um, going back to Pipestone National Monument, these are the proposed river alternatives where the company is Magellan Royal proposes to build these pipelines. And you can see that they cross a number of landlines. Uh, whether they're filled up during the year, if they're seasonal or permanent, when we get water at the surface in terms of precipitation, they go to these blue areas. So our A three is the favorite right now, for it would, it would cross a seventeen natural bedlands. And these provide critical habitat to the local biodiversity and what's left of endangered species. Next. Again. And so why do we care? So in the left image here, we have this little red illustration, those are both historical and current Pipestone queries. So we're here because Pipestone has had cultural significance to our people for thousands of years, that you know, back in three thousand years, in some studies. Um, we can see that the exposed Pipestone is found only within the national Pipestone monuments. And according to the United States Geological Survey back in nineteen eighty, nineteen seventy-nine, um, that Pipestone is confined to an area of only two to three hundred feet. And. Okay. So that's small Pipestone. It's, um, it's unique, it's the, as Elijah said, it's unique in the world because of its lesser amounts of quartz, which means it's as soft as you can hear now. But it's also overlaid by a ten-feet of quartzite, which is extremely hard. And then another huge thick rock layer of quartzite. So it's sandwiched there between two very heavy and hard rock layers. And that Pipestone dips to the east at an eighty-degree angle. And again, it's only confined to two to three hundred feet. And this is the only red Pipestone with its unique chemical signature found in the world, as a most recent published study in two thousand twenty-three. So, um, it's very scarce, and again, everything is connected at the surface, the water, the land, and so this entire landscape holds cultural significance to us. Next.
So I talked about this a little bit, but this is a visual, um, pictorial symbology of what we're talking about. The TEK, Traditional Ecological Knowledge, that is very wise and old, and it's in that paper that I sent you. But the prelude to all of this knowledge comes from the Buffalo Nation. We patternize ways like where natural and rams are, you know, high for wisdom. And a lot of these teachings have been preserved even in the endangered species. So this is what we call the Spirit Road to Pipestone, because those thirty-five thousand comments that came in, they came from Canada, they came from New York, they came from all the coasts, because those people had families knew of the significance of the sacred site. And so it's so, it's one of the most sacred sites of our people, and it's not, it's the Chachacón, which is the central council fires, the culture, the highway culture, money. They all came here as a place of peace, and they would, they did not camp. Archaeologists that are doing the survey now are saying that they didn't do anything beyond the park, that's not true. Um, a lot of the camping was outside of the quarry because it was so sacred. And some of the research that my daughter uncovered is that Omaha would go all the way back to Good Earth, because they know where Good Earth Park is from here, so also, they would query, and then they'd go back there and they'd work on the pipe, so they wouldn't litter or cause any damage. And the other tribes did that, they went up to enemy swim. So all of these roads that were camps get relating into Pipestone. The archaeologists from Western Science don't even know that. So we can recognize life forms, there are certain sites that exist when creeks came together in the water. So we have all of that in winter camps in our area. And so those are significant things that are gonna be totally missed, and it's also tied into the, eventually the health of your home area. This, Lonnie, are you on?
Yeah, um. You're actually ready for, I, I can't be in person, but I'm glad to be here on Zoom. Uh, my name's Lonnie Provost, I am a Hunktwan, and I'm a, I'm an organizer with Braveheart Society, and I'm really glad to be here tonight. But, um, yeah, my, my part that I wanted to talk about was, was hoping for a call, call to action to, for you, all of you residents there in, in Pipestone. Um, as, as my colleagues have talked about, you know, there's, there is definitely some environmental concerns that, that are happening in this, um, from this project. It is crossing many waterways, um, um, grasslands and affecting endangered species, and not, not, not to mention cultural sites. But, um, you know, the, the purpose of this environmental worksheet, or, or as we know, that on this project, there hasn't been an environmental assessment done to get on this project. And to engage that process in Minnesota, um, you can, you can, uh, by, by filling out this, this worksheet, this environmental assessment worksheet, um, you can help engage that process. And, and the purpose of this is to, you know, to evaluate the pipeline's project's impact on Pipestone's environment and community. And, and what I put on here, why it matters to, to safeguard the air, water, land, and quality for future generations, not, not just for us, but for everybody there in, in Pipestone County and in, in the city of Pipestone. And then the community house, you know, assess your potential impacts on public health and well-being. And then also to ensure accountability and transparency from, from the, on the, on the regulatory side. And so what you can do is you can complete, you can go to, um, on the Minnesota website, um, pull up this forum right here and complete the EAW. And then in the process, the other thing I think that you can do is really inform your community. Share, share, um, with all, everybody that's a stakeholder, you know, the, the land, landholders, farmers, um, anybody that, that, um, that this is gonna impact, you know, have a town hall and, and talk to them about sharing the updates on this project and, and why it matters, you know, why, why, why don't you want this project to happen? You know, because it, um, you know, like, like we were saying, all, all of this stuff, um, is gonna go through this area, it's gonna, it's gonna cross waterways, it's gonna endanger, um, you know, um, and it's endangered species, all of those things, you know, and, um, so, so really, really, it's, it's gonna affect everybody that's living there currently, you know, in, in Pipestone, in Pipestone County. And so if, if you want, if you have any questions about how to fill out this, um, this EAW, please contact the, the EQW, the Environmental Quality Board staff. And I, I provided the, um, the email there and, and the phone number to contact them to help you fill out this, this EAW. But yes, um, so I, I just wanted to share that much, um, and, um, I, I really hope that, um, I, I know that, that, um, you've already made the comments to, um, you know, opposing this, this pipeline because, because of various, um, issues, you know, the proximity to the, to the cemetery. And, and also I, I seen that you, uh, you mentioned cultural resources too as well, so I really appreciate, you know, you being an ally in this. And so I'm really hoping that we can work together on fighting this pipeline, because it's, it's not a matter of if this is gonna, gonna leak, it's just a matter of when it's, it's gonna leak. And that's, that's, that's just a fact, you know, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lonnie. Um, just one additional thing from Alexis. Can you talk about the weight that could dissipate by song? And if there's any industrial product or any other things?
Um. Uh, so one of the major concerns that we have is if the pipeline is built, it would be quite heavy. What does that mean to this surrounding bedrock there? We talked about the scarcity of that did-wear Pipestone, which is again as soft as your finger now. As soft as your fingernail. If, if, you know, if I was to tell you, it could, you know, hinge out, hinge out, let's lift it. Um, and.
That's a major, major concern.
Yeah, and that's one of our major concerns.
You have questions, comments, there's other people here, Isaac. Want to say something?
This is your time, so I don't want to take any, any of your time with questions, but yeah, if there's anyone else that wants to speak.
And we also have another team member, Eric, maybe after him.
I'd like to share. Um, we would like to, you know, we would like to ask the question, I'm sorry, the Minnesota Affairs Council, well, she, Ed Shum, I work for the Minnesota Affairs Council, I'm one of the cultural resource managers, um, for the agency, and, um, just to, just kind of echo off and re, re, what was said, and, um, just a lot of the concerns for the environment is just a lot of, um, the living entities that are a part of the ecosystem. And, um, you know, what, what we're trying to protect and preserve is, um, like the town is named after, uh, Pipestone. It stands right behind you guys, and, you know, it's a very, very sacred item, and, um, I know you've heard a, heard a lot of how sacred this place is, and just to, you know, echo off to same kind of things, is that our people, who says, um, someplace is sacred is Jerusalem. Um, uh, sacred pyramids in, uh, South America, and, um, places that Buddha walked and talked to his people. So this is just to, um, you know, say how sacred this place is, and that, um, the environmental concerns, uh, are, um, I guess, really need to be put on the spotlight, pedestal, um, just for, you know, all the proposed infrastructures that are happening around, especially around the creek and around the, the national monument, and, um, again, you know, I'd like to, uh, you know, just say thank you again for your allyship and, um, being good stewards of the land here, and, uh, something, again, a place that would have something that's so sacred and, um, that's so valuable to our people and that, um, that Minnesota Affairs Council stands behind the, this sort of research and this, you know, this presentation that you got to see today. And, uh, witness the information that you've, you've received, and, you know, I, I'm sure, you know, if you have a, a lot of time that we can show you in more deep, the, uh, in depth of the environmental concerns that are here. And, um, I know you got the paper, and you can read it for yourselves, but just to hear it and just to sit back and listen to, uh, concerned members and concerned citizens of, of this land and to express themselves to, so, um, yeah, so with the PUC order, um, by Minnesota Affairs Council, this, this is what the, the.
Isaac.
Yes.
I, I'm here too, and I can talk to that case if you don't mind.
Yes, yes, I'll be glad, I didn't know you were on, Brandon, thank you. I'm the director for our agency as well.
So, hello, everybody, my name is Brandon Elkair, I'm a citizen of the Standing Roxu Nation, but I'm also, uh, the Legislative and Policy Director for the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council. Um, I, I want to start with two apologies first. First apologizing that I'm not there in person, unfortunately, my schedule pulls me in about twelve different spaces all the time. So I apologize for not being there in person. But secondly, I wanted to apologize because, um, I, I, I feel like there was an opportunity missed. I wish we would have reached out sooner to our, our friends down in Pipestone and built a relationship. Um, because we. Because we have a lot of things in common and our paths historically have crossed many, many times. And so I, I, I'm glad we're having this conversation now. I appreciate every, all the work you guys have done, the letters you put forth in opposition of something like the Magellan Pipestone or a pipeline. And so I, I, I want to start there with kind of our mission for our agency is that we are here for the sole purpose of strengthening the sovereignty of the 11 tribal nations within Minnesota. And what that means at the core of that is to build these kind of relationships that are built on commonality. Cause in, in the bigger picture, we're, we're all Minnesotans. We want our beautiful land to remain beautiful. And how can we do that when various companies like Magellan and One Oak come into our state without investment? They don't have anything in our state that they're, and then they want to run some of these really bizarre pipelines through our backyard without, you know, any kind of reciprocal investment into the communities to which they're potentially could harm. So I appreciate the council here sending in a letter in opposition with some hesitation of that. We want to strengthen that today. That is one of our asks is that we're hoping that we're, we're, we share those hesitations with you. So we are tasked to do three things in the PUC order. And this is all interrelated on how the state in Minnesota is really the gold standard for the nation right now in how it engages with tribal nations. So under 1065, Minnesota statute 1065, it requires all consultations, which then brings a seat to the table for the sole purpose of maintaining the beauty of our state, really. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but I'm going to say it anyway. It's one of my favorite statistics that 80% of the world's biodiversity exists on tribal land. And so we know how to protect the beauty of our species. We know how to protect the beauty of our land. And we're happy to, to partner with our different partners in also protecting that in the surrounding communities. So here with these routes, we are tasked with finding the surveyors. That is one of our mandates under the, under the PUC order. We're also tasked with coordination and conferring with survey results and findings and then looking at how to move forward. So what's on the table is a PUC permit. And if they do not coordinate or collaborate with us, use our recommendations. That's the piece that is not in compliance and puts them at risk of having the permit denied. They have had this pipeline decommissioned for quite a few years now. And there, there's a couple of big concern pieces. I'm not sure if the council here has also those concerns, but they sealed it. And one of their, one of their statements to us at the Indian Affairs Council, when I asked, what is, what are you going to do with that pipeline that exists that you just sealed? They said, we're going to let it return to earth. And so that's, that's, they're, in other words, they're going to leave their trash in our backyard, let it biodegrade into the land. No survey work or no impact study has been done on what happens when these pipes, you know, in a, just go back to the earth as they call it. And so that's a troubling piece. This is business as usual across the nation that these pipelines do that. Again, this pipeline was not decommissioned from their own volition. It was decommissioned per EPA. And so with Magellan making this argument, the argument that they brought forth was that it's going to reduce the cost of fuel for the local region. They've been operating without this pipeline for a few years now and our fuel prices remain steady. And so I, I'm not sure where they're getting this information from. But I just wanted to reiterate, one, that we're, we're, we're here. We want to, I'm hoping this is the beginning of a, of a relationship between the Indian Affairs Council, the Tribal Nations and the city of Pipestone. Again, our histories cross many times. But two, I want to reiterate and celebrate that your opposition does have merit to something like this. Your concerns have merit and your hesitations, we also share those with you. So I would ask that. And, and we don't mind sharing after we file our report for the requirements we are required to do on how we made those came to the findings we've come to within our agency. So and with that, I will pause and send it back or to Isaac.
And you covered it pretty well. Here for us, the Minnesota Affairs Council and no questions.
What is the timeline now with the proposed pipeline? And do they have a specific location for that pipeline that's been approved? Or will they be submitting that? I know they did at one time and then it went backwards again. And where are they at right now? I guess that's my question.
The permit has been rescinded, but it's historical.
Yes.
Or anything like that. And they told us largely it was because of the large 35,000 people sending letters and saying stop. And I know that at that point, when they stopped, they went to the Minnesota Advisor Council because they knew that it was culturally competent. Advice and wisdom needed particularly at the sacred site. So what the advisor council did is they came and we did a cultural competency training, which we were allowed to do for the city council to look at all those considerations that we've been touched tonight. And so order, and he just went over it, is that when the results of the survey that was coerced and pushed by the pipeline, they coerced six tribes to participate and those tribes did a secret rate. And they will turn the results and write Brandon to you. And we will examine those and we still will do our own survey with the traditional knowledge that we have. And we will, go ahead.
I was going to say, I'm sorry Faith, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We will just answer briefly. So where we are with that right now is the way the order was written, they purposely wrote it to leave the discretionary piece and timelines to the Indian Affairs Council. So in, this is purposeful because for a couple of reasons. One, that PUC is also mandated under 1065 to do consultation with the tribal nations on a yearly basis on any projects that require or that have tribal implication. And so when they issued their original permit, that consultation factor wasn't in place. So they didn't actually go for consultation before issuing the permit, which allowed for the grounds to resent. On two, they're, they're, under the order, the rescinded order, they allowed us to create the timeline for that. And so what we've always said during that, after the order was issued, that we would have our timeline roughly late fall, which we're entering into that time period right now, before we file and make our recommendations known. So we're coming up on that timeline. It is discretionary, but we've chosen a mark on the calendar and so that's where we'll have everything ready for review.
And to wrap up, thank you, questions, to wrap up your question. Yes, currently they did do a survey with only a handful of tribes, but with the contractor not of who we selected as the Minnesota University Agency and what the PUC ordered. And the report should be done maybe middle to end of fall. And from there then we'll, sorry, reviewing the, reviewing the report and confirming what, what was seen and but also having, starting our own separate survey apart from what has already been done because following the PUC's order. So as another part of the, other part of the question at the moment, no route was chosen yet. Both RA, RA three and RA one are still on the table at the moment.
Okay.
And what against the surveyors is One Oak is from Oklahoma. So there's no way that those people know anything about Minnesota or this area. So it's like somebody from Australia coming over here to survey. It's a safe area.
Well, thank you for the information that you provided this evening. And yeah, now I understand where the permit process is at. They no doubt are going to reapply. And this is the chance to present an argument again against it. And whatever the city of Pipestone can do to support, we would certainly like you to come forward and request that support.
I think one that I would suggest, and I wouldn't do it without permission, but I understand we're looking at an industrial park on the north side. Alexis is like a scooper diver as a geologist. So she can study water sheds, she can see dangers, she can see aquifer. I don't know if you want to say something about that, but we're utilizing her going to be at the uranium developments in the rock hills. We need to find out and not a lot of people are still to say, what is down there a thousand feet? Work and I want to give you an example of something that really shook my spirit. When I was growing up, I used to see the Missouri River go backwards. And we grew up seeing that and it was like a natural phenomenon. And I was asking Reno Red Cloud from Ocala, I said, Reno, what do you think about it? When the river goes backwards? And he looked at me and he said, hmm, maybe there's a connection with the aquifer. And then I asked Alexis and she said, you know, there's underground rivers. And that just gave me a start because we don't even know what underground rivers exist. It could be under us right now. And so I don't know if you want to.
Well, I, I think having Alexis' contact information to our engineer would be very helpful. And then the engineering firm can go back and forth. Right, right. It's over my head. Okay. Thank you.
Before we close on it, just want to mention something that we forgot to mention. The one, first next for my life. Magellan leads the industry in pipeline leaks. We did, you know, between Magellan and their subsidiaries, we are the number one pipeline leak company in America. Okay, yeah. Right, so like I said, Magellan is the number one pipeline leak company in the United States, probably well on the top 10 list in the world. Pipelines leak, we know this. Pipelines will come in, pipeline companies will come in and say, oh, one of these things, we need the four of the pipeline a little bit thicker. And so now we'll never, ever, ever leak. We know this, this is wrong. Magellan has, has had multiple leaks just this year and the year before, and the year before, and the year before, and the year before. One of the things that is really stressing to us is Katalanite because of its geological composition. It's like a sponge oil. So one type of oil gets in Katalanite, it's sitting right up. And there is now some different way to mitigate mix on once it has oil and you get a certain way that you mitigate. Oil contamination in rocks is you cook Katalanite, it's just sand. So after that scarcity, this is the only Katalanite in the world. And one pipeline leak is all it will take to wipe it off the face of the planet and end 3,000 years of traditional culture. So from there, I just want to wrap it up and thank all of you for making time to, to hear a bunch of folks talk about some crazy stuff.
Thank you.
We need to stay in. Yes, yeah, yeah.
We have one team member here that is our, we have a diverse of a team. So just introduce yourself and record you.
Yeah, I appreciate your time here, council members. My name is Derek Marks. I'm with Braveheart Society, part of the Indian Sioux tribe. I appreciate the time, your patience with us and just engaging in some of this healthy conversation. As an elected member, you know, yourself, it's your responsibility to look out for your people. And your letters of opposition have shown that. And so I just want to let you know that this deal is beyond just this meeting. It shouldn't sit on your desk, it shouldn't sit anywhere stagnant. This is a place that needs to go forward. The, some of the options that were given to help out, you know, sometimes you wonder when you see the seats, how can you do? A lot of the times you folks have the connection, you have advice that we don't. Or you have the phone numbers or you have emails of folks, we don't. And you can be advocates in protecting not just us or the Hana'kaua or the 23 nations, but much further than that. And that's Minnesota, that's people downstream, and that's the people, your neighbors, truly love your neighbor. That's the way you do it, is you, you partner and ally with those around. So I appreciate seeing you be here and be part of it. So thank you, thank you, Derek.
Can I, can I say one last thing before we wrap up here? If that's permitted.
Sure, yes, go ahead.
I just, I just really want to add that I, I know that Faith had already mentioned that a town hall and so did Lonnie, a town hall with the neighbors to whom both Route RA one and RA three are seeking easements on it. The, the pipeline, Magellan in North Dakota has similar easements in place with royalties going into it. And that's turning into a really big mess right now. Aside from the fact that these are farmlands, these are generational farmlands that are being crossed right now with, that are being proposed to be crossed with this pipeline. That, when that leaks, those, not just the Pipestone, but the generational farmlands, this is going to be refined fuel coming through these pipelines. That's a different ballgame than just crude oil. So that's like highly toxic, highly poisonous. Those are, those are components that need to be considered by both your neighbors and this council. So I would encourage you to reach out, bring, bring the experts back in to talk about how this could impact when something like that, both the royalty component and then the, the highly, the toxicity of the pipeline when it actually leaks. And thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Shake your hands?
Absolutely.
Great, just in case. You're fine.
Thank you, Faith.
Take care.
You answered one of my questions that I've had since I've been very young about the campsites.
Yes.
I often wondered why, if there was so many people here, why didn't we find any campsites in the median area?
Yes.
That makes so much sense.
Landmarks, streams, water forms, and we know that.
Yeah, it makes so much sense now. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, did I?
Nice to meet you. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
I don't mind chicken.
We will stay in touch and we've got some great local people in the area too that are involved with this. So keep us informed, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Bye. Thank you. Okay, so that took care of presentation A and B. And let's move on to old business. And we need to discuss a petition for detachment from the city of Pipestone to Gray Township. And two petitions for detachment from the city have been provided to the city. From O'Neill O'Neill and Burdouson Law Office on behalf of the petitioners. Attorney Hill will present, will present to explain the council's options and next steps. And so at this time, I would turn things over to Attorney Jason Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh yeah, so we've discussed this a few times. Um I have checked the states, uh the Court of Administrative Hearings, uh and the Boundary Adjustment Unit. Um uh Mr. Sandy had indicated that the petition was mailed. Uh petitions were mailed last week and they haven't been filed yet. Um so I don't know if they just haven't been received yet or kind of processed. Um so they're not kind of formally filed yet, but they've been mailed and. I'm okay kind of proceeding with, you know, kind of the the next step would be, you know, a decision of the city council. To uh oppose the detachments, to approve the attachments, or just to remain neutral, not take a position. The. If you decide to oppose it, eh it kind of, it also kind of depends on what the township does, Gray Township. Um I don't know if they've looked at this yet, um if they've made any kind of decision. If they would oppose it or are in favor of it, or what position they have. But if you remember, basically. If both the city and the town are okay with it, it gets approved without a hearing. If they both oppose it, it gets denied without a hearing. And any other variant of those, there's a hearing before an administrative law judge. And the petitioners would need to prove, there's kind of a whole long list of things they would need to prove. Uh one of those things that it can't be developed, and I think that's in their, in their uh petition. It's my understanding that some of this property likely could be developed. Uh it's in kind of flood areas, but it could be developed if you had uh, you know, certain conditions applied, uh things like that. Uh so it really would only make sense for the, the, you know, if this was. A kind of truly kind of rural parcel. That there's no plan in the future of ever kind of developing. Um you know, it even, or it couldn't be developed, physically couldn't be developed. Uh you know, it really wouldn't make sense for the city to oppose it. Um but if these are uh, you know. These are tax revenue generating parcels. Um if they can be developed and they're, I know the one particular is kind of right next to an area that's already developed and. And, you know, certainly it would look like a good spot to expand. Um but if they're, you know, possible to be developed, uh you know, the city can oppose it, just. I would just, you would have the understanding, um we're going to be going to a hearing on, you know, on that. I've handled hearings mostly related to um annexations um for administrative law judges. Uh but these are, a lot of these factors they're looking at are very similar. Um so if we're really going to oppose it, we would probably want um, you know, maybe somebody like Travis or. Uh building official folks, you know, other people to really be able to, you know, if I'm at a hearing, have them testify that, you know. We really would like to keep this property, it can be developed, um you know, it's in the city's plan, you know, those types of things. Um so there are a lot of factors kind of taken into consideration, but this very first step is just the council deciding. Are we going to oppose it, are we going to uh to approve it, maybe, you know, you guys are fine with it. Um that's, you know, entirely up to the council. Uh but that would be this first step. Um so that's kind of where I would, I would leave it for that, if, you know, depending on how that goes and how what township decides. Um then we would kind of be on the path towards a hearing, so.
Okay, I I guess at this point then it would make sense to direct staff to uh investigate further. And come up with a recommendation on uh opposing or approving the request. And and I would think, yes, we would need to be looking at a comprehensive uh land use study. And uh um other factors that we've already been involved with in that area and have uh used city funding. For that, and then we can make a informed decision. And Jason, when would, I would assume that they would want to know um in the very near future what our stance is?
Yeah, I would assume there, there is no timeline in the statutes.
Okay.
It's. I think, I would think it's reasonable to give both the township and the city an opportunity, like you said, to. Think about it, uh look into it. Um I will see, once it gets filed, um then I'll have kind of a file number and a court number that I can. Uh reach out to those folks, I've worked with them a lot, so I I can reach out to them directly. And just kind of see what the situation there is and see if there is a timeline. You know, it it's my understanding you guys might be having a special meeting. Um towards the end of the month, we're in that, we're in one of those months where we have an early second meeting. Um for the month, I don't know if you guys are going to have another one for the uh preliminary budget or not, but.
I I would assume that we would be having, we we haven't uh approved our preliminary budget yet, so we need to do that by the end of September, so something will be happening before then.
Yeah, we we could roll it into that if some, if if the timeline was shorter, um or we could just have a special meeting quick to. To figure that out, I can work with staff uh to kind of address specifically the criteria uh that are required. That the petitioners would have to prove. Um but, you know, just see if, you know. And see what, you know, like I said, what benefit is there to the city to to keep these, is it okay? And there's two different petitions, so you might take a different position on one. Uh you know, okay, we're fine with that one going, but this one, you know, you can do that as well, so. Well, it it'll be good to dig into that stuff, and then we can uh make a recommendation to the council.
Okay, so so that kind of uh, I have another question then that comes up, so then if we. Come together and say, you know what, we can handle this one petition being uh uh dropped out of the same office, but we don't want to see the other one dropped out. So then we have a scenario where there will be a hearing, will that hearing be about both petitions then, or will it only be about the petition? That we're opposing?
It would depend, eh it, well, let's say we have one where the city says they um they're okay with it. But the township says they oppose, there would be a hearing on it. And, you know, this, eh for that particular one.
Okay.
Um eh we would just say, no, we're fine, you know, we would probably want to be involved in the hearing. Just to make sure, but, you know, there would still be a hearing on it, uh because it, it is two separate petitions.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Thank you. So that's something we'll be addressing then at a later date. Okay, new business, uh request for council action in the Pipestone Area Chamber of Commerce. Is requesting the following for their tenth annual trunk or treat in downtown Candy Walk on Friday, October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And they'd like to close the one hundred and two hundred blocks of West Main Street, the one hundred block of East Main Street from three PM to six thirty PM. And Public Works assisting placing street closing signs, barricades, few trashcans at following locations. Uh and then they also have, they would like their trash cans at uh West Main and Liberty Pallan, East Main and First Bank and Trust. First Farmers and Merchants Bank, and then on the intersection of Second Avenue, Southwest, Northwest, and Hyawath, the North and South, and this is all things that we have done in the past. Um trunk or treats are very popular uh um Pipestone Chamber uh um thing that they do. And uh it's well accepted in the community, so I'd entertain a motion to approve this uh request.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Another request for uh council action, the Pipestone Elementary Boosters are requesting the use of Westview Park. Along with the use of the concession stand and bathrooms, ten extra picnic tables and four extra garbage totes. And that would be on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, and that's our annual back to the school bath. And uh this is, since they're a five oh one three nonprofit organization, they're requesting the council waive all the rental fees. So I'd entertain a motion.
I know.
Second, been moved and seconded, is there any questions, discussion? Eh have they done this in the past?
Yeah, last year was their first.
Last year was the first year, so this is the second year and it was, must have been very successful.
Tremendous success.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-seven, this resolution, if approved, will declare costs to be assessed. And preparations for the proposed assessment of the twenty twenty-three street and utility improvement project. And Deb, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Um yeah, we've uh Travis worked against final assessment role, was not getting that prepared um underneath the whole assessment. And so things have come in looking pretty good.
And and for the record, the twenty twenty-three street and utility improvement project, what area town was that?
That was um down towards the southeast side of town, and then Main Street, so it was two years worth of project.
Okay.
So it was the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four when we did Main Street.
And this would be the also what they did in twenty twenty-four?
Correct, the Main Street piece and that, some piece, some along the second.
And that puts us up to date with all the recent uh.
Correct.
Um work on our utilities and streets, so I'd entertain a motion.
I saw motion. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-eight, this resolution accepts a donation from Hank's Foods. Who donated apples and chips valued at a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. For daycare day at the Family Aquatic Center, so it'd entertain a motion for that generous uh donation. Moved and seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-nine, this resolution, if approved, gives city support to apply for the League of Minnesota Cities Grant Navigation Program. The program provides grants up to five thousand dollars per city to the use with industrial partners to ease the process. Of identifying matching funds to city projects and aids in the grant application project. EDA Director Troyer is looking to apply for the Grant Navigation Program to seek financial support from the Minnesota DNR. Relief Grant Program to develop a Community Forest Management Plan. And again, this ties into some of the information we received tonight. And uh this shows that the city of Pipestone is uh very proactive when it comes to uh our natural resources. And uh we're seeking some additional grant funds to uh keep those resources pristine if we can, so. I would entertain a motion. It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, any questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five sixty, this resolution will authorize the city to enter into a grant agreement. With the Minnesota Department of Transportation Airport Maintenance and Operations Grant Program. Funds received from this grant will reimburse the city for various maintenance and operations expenses at the Pipestone Minnesota Airport. Entertain a motion.
I move the new resolution twenty twenty-five down six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any questions, comments? And again, this is a place where uh the city of Pipestone is trying to operate as efficiently as possible. We've got some great staff people that are working as best they can to receive these types of grants that are available out there to uh. Let's do the job that we need to do at the most reasonable cost, so thanks for their efforts. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Consider employee title change and appointment of duties, and with the resignation of our former building and zoning administrator. The council made the decision at their September second council meeting to contract with the company SafeBuild to handle all of the building officials' duties. That were held by the building and zoning administrator. SafeBuild will not be taking over any of the planning and zoning duties at this time. Therefore, the city administrator is recommending that council consider adding the duties to the ADA director, just in Troyer's job description. And also change his position title to the Community Development Director. To ensure that this title is appropriate for the position. Uh a community development director serves at the city's lead for guiding growth, fostering economic opportunities. And ensuring thoughtful land use planning. This role combines the responsibilities of the economic director and the planning and zoning administrator to provide a unified approach to community progress. If the council chooses to move forward with this change for his title and adding the planning and zoning duties to his job description, the change will take effect immediately. And the new job description will be forwarded into David Brown and Associates to have them. Review and classify the position to determine if the position will require a K-grade change. And and so again, this is the uh city trying to operate as efficiently as possible. Um combining these uh um positions certainly makes sense to me. It's uh getting the same job done at a, at a more reasonable rate. And uh the EDA director's position was so closely involved with uh zoning and planning anyway. Um why not have it under one umbrella there, so. Um it was certainly a good idea that uh uh Deb had came up with and uh. I think it's something that will work well for the city of Pipestone in the long run. Entertain a motion.
So.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Fire Prevention Week proclamation, and I'd like to read that into the record at this time. Therefore, the city of Pipestone is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in or visiting Pipestone and. Whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And the presence of lithium batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. And whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools. E-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium ion batteries. Which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires. Underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action. Buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly. To prevent battery-related fires, and whereas lithium ion batteries store a large amount of ele, of energy. In a small space. An improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification. Or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion, and. Whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries helps prevent environmental hazards. And reduce fire risk to the home and the community. And whereas city of Pipestone first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention. Safety education and community outreach. And whereas the twenty twenty-five Fire Prevention Week theme. Charge into fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home. Serves to remind us of the importance of using charging and recycling lithium ion batteries. Safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Therefore, I Dan Delaney, mayor of the city of Pipestone, do hereby proclaim, October fifth. Through the eleventh, twenty twenty-five, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Pipestone. through the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Pipestone. Okay, then I have item I, and I had a late request on the four-way stop sign placement at Third Avenue Northwest and Second Street Northwest. And just to put that into perspective, that would be one block directly west of the Senior Citizen Center. It is a two-way stop now, and Second Street being the through street. Um the question has come up is that it's very difficult to see traffic on Second Street because of the building structure there when you're headed north without uh driving into the lane before you can see if there's oncoming traffic coming. So with uh more seniors using that route, and the request was to put in a four-way stop at that location. I know we had a four-way stop at the next block, one block uh further west of that, and that would have been at Fourth Avenue at one time, but that was taken out a few years ago. Um and I think the argument there was uh it hindered commerce. And uh but now we have a new building there, we have a different traffic flow. Um we have more traffic flow there for senior citizen center use than we do for the building just directly to the east of it, because that's been open now for quite some time. So um it's a request that's being put forward, and uh it's a safety issue. And so I wanted to bring it up to see what other members of the council think of the idea.
Do we have to ask for approval from the county with this, this, in this county state?
Probably should. Take into that.
Well, would they be required to put up the signage if in fact we did uh move ahead with something like that?
No, we maintain that road.
So when we went on to Eighth Avenue, went over by Southwest Park, they did install that sign.
Yeah.
We went from the yield to the stop sign, they did install it.
Yeah, I I think it would be their responsibility to install it, but that's something that we can certainly look into. Again, this is in the beginning stages and I'm not looking for a decision tonight. I I wanted to bring it up, I want to talk with our uh um public safety director at uh City Highway and uh see what their recommendation is and uh see what law enforcement's recommendations are. And uh something that we can uh put on a agenda for a future meeting or a decision. But just bringing it up for information at this time. Any other questions, comments? Okay, um closing comments, any closing comments from the council? Hearing none, entertain a motion for adjournment.
I saw motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.